From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you, good morning, and welcome to the Tuesday, July 11, 2017, meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We're going to begin today's meeting with a flag salute that's going to be led by Michael Rao, and ask if you would remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Mr. Rao, please.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance by the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. If you'd like to follow along with our agendas this morning, they're located at the two back tables near the exits, and we're going to read through the consent items now. All items listed with a C-A above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So this time, I'll read the consent agenda items. Starting on page two, items two through six are all on consent. On page three, all items nine through fifteen are on consent. On page four, all items sixteen through twenty-three are on consent. On page five, items twenty-four and twenty-five, as well as twenty-seven through thirty, are on consent. On page six, all items thirty-four through thirty-nine are on consent. On page seven, all items forty through forty-eight are on consent. So are there any members of the audience who'd like to make any comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board and ask if any board members would like to remove an item, or I would request a motion to approve.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you, and now we'll return to page two on our agenda, item number one, under Resolutions and Proclamations. This is to proclaim July 2017 as Purple Ribbon Month in Kern County, an acknowledgement of Caitlin's Law, and Supervisor Maggard will make this presentation.
Thank you, I make a motion to approve the proclamation.
You have a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Come on up. Good morning, colleagues. It was August 15th, the year 2000, in Riverside County. Riverside County has nothing on Kern County about being hot, less hot than we are. It was a blistering hot day on August the 15th, the year 2000, and a beautiful little six-month-old girl named Caitlin Marie Russell was taken in a van, the family's van, with her caregiver that day. The problem that followed was that the caregiver forgot and left her in the van, and it was closed windows, locked up, and the temperature rose, and tragically, little Caitlin died. If there's any good that comes out of a tragedy like that, it is that her parents and community rallied to bring awareness to the fact that tragedies like that should never happen again. And that came, that effort led to the passage of something called Caitlin's Law, and in July of each year, we celebrate the fact that, I guess "celebrate" is the wrong word, we remember the significance, the importance of reminding people of the danger of leaving their children left behind in hot cars. At least nineteen children have already died this year from hyperthermia in the United States, so it's still an ongoing problem. But July is Purple Ribbon Month, and a time that we want to bring to the public's attention all of the significance and importance of that, so it's red-hot in the minds of people. And I am joined by a host of people, but I'm going to give the proclamation to Dina Murphy, and you can let others speak, as you have worked that out. But Dina, this is a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, the state of California. We have officially proclaimed July 2017 as Purple Ribbon Month in Kern County. It's been entered into our minutes with the signature of our chairman, the Honorable Zach Scrivner. On this, the 11th day of July 2017, please tell us more about, thank you for remembering this and making people aware of it. Please tell us what's going to happen this month.
Thank you so much Supervisor Maggard, and thank you to board members and Chairman Scrivner for recognizing Purple Ribbon Month and giving us the opportunity to communicate about Caitlin's Law, which Supervisor Maggard has shared some of the pertinent details, but Caitlin's Law did make it a citable defense, offense for leaving an unattended child in the car. And if you think that this can't happen in our own backyard, I want to share with you that yesterday, at the Department of Human Services, a mother forgot her child. She locked that child in the car at 1:00 in the afternoon, and at 2:06, 2:06, a good Samaritan broke the door open to the car. Now, that child is alive, by the grace of cloud coverage and a good Samaritan who found him, but this could have been right here in Kern County. As disturbing as this is, it still happens, and it's why it's so very important that we have the opportunity to reach out and communicate, and it's not even in my speech, but if you are breaking your pattern, if you're going someplace different, it is so important that you put your license in the back, if that's what you're going to need where you go, or your purse, or your briefcase, or your phone. No one leaves without their phone today. So, you know, just the little, just the little reminders to get your child out of the car. And then, thank goodness for that good Samaritan who recognized the child was there, had a tool in their car, and broke the car door open. So, and of course, we had our first responders with law enforcement and fire there, so it's not a tragic ending, but it is a real reminder about the need for people walking through grocery store, parking lots, or anywhere else, to keep their eyes out as they're walking through. If they see a child, call 911. Call 911 immediately. We're not alone in the effort in human services. We're surrounded by tremendous partners, first responders, and those also who help us reach out with communication and awareness on this very critical issue. Today, we have with us Kern County Sheriff Donna Youngblood, our Kern County Fire Department Chief, Brian Marshall, Lisa Green, our district attorney, our Kern County Animal Services Director, Nick Cullen, our Kern County Public Health Director, Matt Constantine. All of these folks share our message of how to keep children safe in and around vehicles. As Supervisor Maggard said, this year, in the last ten years, we have lost nineteen children to hypothermia. So, on Wednesday, here's the event that's coming up, and I know that you have packets on Wednesday, the 13th, our department, along with our partners, will hold a press conference at St. John's Lutheran Church Children's Center, located at 4500 Buena Vista Road, at 11:00 a.m. And the safety demonstration will really show how quickly cars become hot. You can count on the inside temperature of a car going up 20 degrees in the first 10 minutes. So, if you can imagine yesterday, that little boy's indoor temperature in the car would have been approaching 150 degrees. So, just hard to imagine that he came out of it as well as he did. I hope that you'll have the opportunity to join us. Other things that they demonstrate are how many little children can be backed up behind an SUV before you can see them in a rear vehicle, and it averages between seventeen and nineteen children before you can actually see them because of the blind spots. So, it's a real eye-opener. I thank my partners for helping us every day, all year long, in spreading the word and also responding to the emergencies, and thank you so much for this recognition.
The next item on our agenda will be public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. So, at this time, I'll ask if any members of the audience would like to make a public presentation. We ask that you state your name and observe our two-minute time limit. Good morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Michael Horn. I'm also known as King Posit, M.I.C., K.P.A., M.I.C., and the Scorpion Kid. Today, I am here to speak on behalf of the disabled, low-income, the homeless, but especially right now, on this topic, the gifted community of the disabled nation, about protecting and serving, is it crucial or not crucial? That is the question. My goal in this thing is get the law changed that all law enforcement office personnel has to protect and serve all United States citizens. The reason to protect and serve, the cops, the politicians, they don't know who the high-IQ individuals are. They don't know how high IQ and how we can use that IQ to better humankind and animal kind from going in extinction. Federal government definition of giftedness. The U.S. government defines gifted and talented students as those who give evidence of high achievement capabilities in areas such as intellectual, creative, artistic, and leadership capacity, or in specific academic field, and who need service or activity not provided by the school in order to fully develop those capabilities. Triceptional children or gifted children above average ability who have special education needs, ADHD, learning disability, athleticism, et cetera, because the giftedness can mask their specialties, and their specialties can hide their giftedness. They are often labeled as lazy and unmotivated. Accompany positive traits of ADHD, curious, creative, energetic, ego, cease connection with other people, Smith totally involved in what he or she is doing, spontaneous, persistent, won't give up, show flashability, sensitive, sixth sense, intuition, impulsive, and hypoactivity. Some of the people who overcame ADHD, besides myself, is Albert Einstein. They actually looked at what we now know as ADHD and what he had back then, and found out he was diagnosed with, he had ADHD symptoms. Nikolai Tesla, same thing. Mozart, Amadeus Mozart, Ludwig Van, Ludwig Beethoven, John F. Kennedy, Robert Kennedy, George Washington, they all had ADHD. Besides overcoming my ADHD, now, I overcame a fatal disease called the Men's Syndrome, completely healed of epilepsy, overcame child abuse and adult abuse, overcame mental disorder, overcame foster care, yes, I was a former foster child, overcame three group home, overcame speech impairment, overcame discrimination, overcame bullying, overcame learning disability, and overcame wandering eye. I had a high B in algebra. I know how to use a soldering iron, A high A in forestry. I also had my own talk show, active in Special Olympics. And what if, one of these people who I mentioned above, their life was in danger, and their wife witnessed a burglar who they witnessed burglarizing their house, and they got killed in the process when their wife and girlfriend or best friend or roommate tried to tell the officer that their home was burglarized, but the officer of the law did not listen, which is violation of the Bill of Rights, the right to listen and opinions of, thoughts and opinions of others, which Walter Parks did in 1955. That's why she won the case, and not many people know it. And they died in the process. And the officer did not rush over there to protect him or her, would any of these geniuses that I name above would ever been known? No. That should give you why, instead of why to protect and serve, because you might be killing those brainiac people without knowing it.
Mr. Horn, how much more do you have there? Because your time has expired.
Almost.
Okay, please wrap it up, thank you.
And so, that's what I, and that's what has happened to me and my best friend in San Mateo County. And they were willing to sacrifice my life after our home was tried, broke in, and I could have died in the process, and I'm a real-life man, I saw the drought, I saw the global warming, I saw the pollution problem, and if I died, the whole planet dies with me, and that's too high a risk to sacrifice. And that's why that law should be changed, where they have to protect and serve, because by willing to sacrifice my life, they actually caught someone who actually violated, who rightly shouldn't provoke, but they should have caught her in another way, not sacrificed one of those geniuses in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Thank you. Do we have any other public presentations? Please come forward. Good morning.
Hello, my name is Irene Balderas, I'm an LVN.
Would you lower the microphone, please? We're having trouble picking it up.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, if you could start over, please.
Okay. Hello, my name is Irene Balderas, I'm an LVN at Delano District.
Could you spell that, please, for the clerk?
Delano?
Your name, your name, please.
Irene, I-R-E-N-E, last name Balderas, B as in boy, A-L-D as in dog, E-R-A-S.
Thank you.
So, I work at Delano District Skilled Nursing Facility in Delano. I've been working there for 12 years now. My coworkers and I have not had a raise going on three years now. I'm a member of SEIU Local 2015, and we have been trying to close out a contract for three years now. We have some support letters from the community, which state, "SEIU Local 1000 is in support of workers at Delano District Skilled Nursing Facility reaching a contract agreement with North Kern South Tillery Hospital District Administration. This agreement will give workers a path to reliable wages that will benefit the community. This agreement will also help better the care for the elderly and disabled who reside in the facility who need quality care. We understand that both parties are trying to reach a full agreement, but the issues below are slowing the process down. We believe that the proposals that SEIU Local 2015 has made are standard proposals that you will find in many contracts across the state, an arbitration clause that has a mutual selected third party as the final decision, and wage increases that do not allow favoritism. We have, we hope that SEIU Local 2015 members and the North Kern South Tillery Hospital District Board can reach an agreement that will benefit the Delano community, the elderly, the disabled, and the nursing home staff. For this reason, SEIU Local 1000 supports the workers at Delano District Skilled Nursing Facility. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact at 661-370-5986. And we here are asked to our Board of Supervisors in Kern County if we can count on you for our support."
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I cut? Irene? Irene, could you please leave some contact information with Mr. Alsop over there, to your right? The gentleman raised his hand, and I just want you to leave some information, he's going to give it to me, and I'm going to study it and make a decision on whether or not I'm going to support your efforts.
Okay, I'll get it and bring it over here.
Yes, and I'd be glad to sit down, talk with you anytime, schedule an appointment with my office, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gleason. Any other public presentations? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on then to board member announcements or reports. Okay, I don't see any comments from the board, so we'll move on then to our next agenda items. This is item 26, an item under the District Attorney's Office. Request from the District Attorney to make presentation on the Kern County Family Justice Ms. Green, when you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you. Well, good morning, Chairman Scrivner and members of the board. I'm pleased to be here today. To my right is Kristen Barnard. She's a deputy district attorney in my office. She is the acting executive director for the Family Justice Center project, and while she's, she works part-time on the project, she also handles cases in our Family Violence Unit. So I wanted to introduce her. She's really been instrumental in taking this project to the next step, which includes the video. So I'm going to talk very briefly after the video, but we'd like to start by showing this video, which I do want to thank profusely the Board of Trade for their help with this, and then Ms. Barnard, and then the, some of the people who are depicted in the video are here today, and it's about nine minutes long, so with that, I'll defer to the, for the video.
What's the emergency?
My mommy, Daddy, I'm having a fight.
Is he hitting her?
I'm talking to the police, mommy. Daddy! Daddy, help me, baby! Daddy! Could you get to the police, please?
Okay, we're going to be there. What's going on?
They're having a fight because this has been going on forever and ever.
Cause he hurting her?
He made some red marks on mommy.
What did he make the red mark on?
On her neck. Come on, doll! The police are coming!
Is your mom?
Mommy!
Hello?
We know that children tend to do what they see, and they will emulate that behavior in the future.
I was affected by domestic violence when I was younger. I was six years old, and my brother was nine at the time. We lived in Texas with my mom and my dad, and my dad was a very abusive man, and my dad was a very jealous man, and he would follow my mom, he would go to her job, he was very possessive of her, and he always thought my mom was cheating on him, but my mom worked a lot. So, my mom ended up leaving him. She asked him to move out, and I think it escalated and made things worse, because he felt like he couldn't have her. I always remember my dad being verbally abusive to my mom and physically abusive, but I think it started more once she filed for divorce, and he used to always tell her, "If I can't have you, nobody will." On September 15th, 1982, after an altercation at the house, he was arrested. He returned home later that night, and my brother and I were in the doorway watching them argue, and I just remember hearing my mom say for my dad to put the gun away. The next thing you know, I remember my mom running down the hall towards us, and she turned around to my dad, and he shot her. I laid on the ground next to my mom, and I remember hearing her trying to breathe, and I remember she had blood on her chest, and he pointed the gun at us, and he told us to leave, and I didn't want to get off my mom. And I remember telling my brother, "I think she's dying." And my brother laid on the ground with her, and we both were just telling her to wake up, and then she just stopped breathing.
I thought, you know, I thought I loved him. I really did. He was the first person that I, I think I actually really, truly fell in love with, but I know now that, that's not the person that, the person I fell in love with is not the person that he was. He wanted to take my, my brand-new car, and he was clearly drunk, and I wasn't going to allow that, so I hid my keys. He got really mad, and he just attacked me, pulled my hair, again, pulled out huge chunks of my hair, and he kicked me in my head, the last of it, he got on top of me and strangled me until I passed out. I absolutely thought I was going to die. And I remember thinking, when he was twisting my neck, and I thought my neck was going to snap, I remember thinking, this is really going to hurt, it's going to hurt really bad. Well, the first time that I started realizing that he was jealous and controlling, he had taken me to buy me some clothes. We started going out and stuff, and he wanted to buy me an outfit, and he bought me some new jeans and a sweater, and I decided to wear those jeans to work. He saw that I was wearing the jeans to work, and he flipped out on me and called me all kinds of names, and thought that it was horrible that I was, that I was wearing those jeans. I was only allowed to wear those when I was with him, and he pulled me by the hair, almost tried to like pull me through the car window, just very upset that I had worn the jeans that he had bought me to work. That was not allowed. What I would say to someone that would be watching this, would be, or someone that might be in this situation, would be, no matter how much they say they love you, or you feel that they might, and they probably feel they do, that's not love, and love yourself more than that. And if you can't do that, love your kids more than that, if you have them, because love doesn't hurt.
There are many reasons why a victim may not report being abused, and leaving an abusive relationship can be a very dangerous time for a victim and her family. One of the biggest reasons is fear. Fear of what their abuser will do to them, fear for their children, fear for their finances, fear of not knowing where to go, and fear for their lives. My hope is that a Family Justice Center will help bring courage and a sense of security to victims of crime. It will be a place of safety and support to help break the cycle of violence and help hurting families.
My hope is that people can educate and empower themselves, and they can learn that there is help available, and that they deserve a life free from violence and abuse. Too many lives are lost, too many children are affected, and too many people have suffered in silence. That stops with a Family Justice Center.
The Family Justice Center is designed to be a one-stop shop for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, and elder abuse. It is a place where victims can go to receive free services such as counseling, restraining orders, and legal assistance, safety plans, and advocacy services, all under one roof.
There are many, many things that this Family Justice Center will need. There are many opportunities for the community to be more engaged with the people who will be coming through and getting services. Please reach out to our district attorney, indicate that you're committed to helping people in this situation, reach their potential, reach financial independence, and help their children live a better life, because we can't do it alone out of the center.
Please don't ignore the problem. Invest in the solutions and the future of the citizens of Kern County. This is our vision. The foundation has been laid. Now, the work of making it a reality begins. Will you help? Are you in?
I'm in.
I'm in.
I'm in.
I'm in.
I'm in.
We're 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 in.
So I think you can see by viewing the video, for those of you who are seeing it for the first time, that it's very powerful. I want to thank Regina, Rebecca, and Robin, all of whom are here today, who were willing to share their stories, their very personal stories, in a very public way. I'd also like to thank everybody, of course, including the board, for appearing in the I also would like to specifically say, thanks Supervisor Perez for her ongoing and continuing supported this project through many, many ups and downs. I'd also like to thank, some of our partners are here today. I'd also like to thank, some of our partners are here today for the unveiling of the video and have been very supportive of this since the beginning. Kern County Mental Health, GBLA, the Department of Human Services, Dressed for Success, the Alliance Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault, the Victim Witness Advocates from the District Attorney's Family Victim Services Department, the Sheriff's Department, in particular Sheriff Youngblood, the Fire Department. And then, last but not least, I would like to thank Mayor Hall, who is here today because he wanted to be here to show his support for this project. We actually didn't even request or ask him to be here, but he's taken time out of his busy day to be here. He was very... He's seen the video, and of course, Hall ambulance appears, but he was very, I'll use the word "touched" by the video, as I'm sure everybody is. I know that I've briefed the board over the years. I've been working on this project for close to six years. And I brief the board periodically on the status of the Family Justice Center. I'm here today for a couple of reasons, to kind of update you, to unveil the video, but also to let you know that I think that you all know, and everyone here knows, that the Family Justice Center is basically a one-stop location where services can be co-located for domestic violence victims and sexual assault victims. We have identified a county building that needs tenant improvements, but we are hopeful that that will happen quickly. We've established a 501(c)(3). We just got our letter from the IRS, actually, this week, so that there's a public-private partnership. I do have a meeting with CAO Alsup later this week to update him, because I realize that although I had kept Mr. Nylon in the loop, I had failed to talk to Mr. Alsup about it, although he's been very busy in his first six months. We have recently obtained provisional, it hasn't come before the board yet, but a provisional grant in the amount of $1.2 million that will help us defray some of the cost of the tenant improvements for the Family Justice Center, a two-year grant. It will essentially pay for the great thing, I think, from probably your point of view and my point of view, is that there are only really a couple of positions that are salaried positions in the Family Justice Center, because each of the partners absorb the salaries of their personnel who are providing services. And the positions of the Executive Director and as well as a Receptionist would be covered by grant funding. Once the doors are open, there'll be additional grant opportunities available, although we have additional grant opportunities available, although we are actually applying for certain smaller grants. The reason that I felt the timing was right to bring this to the board today, and what I'm asking you to consider, is something that all of you on the board may be unfamiliar with. And it's something that's called the Local Innovation Subaccount. And that was a creation of AB 109. Basically, it was described in AB 109 back in 2011, but there's actually no funding that went into it until, I believe it was 1516. And it's funded by growth money that comes through the Community Corrections Partnership. Supervisor Perez sits as a member on that board. And so currently, there is $421,000 in that subaccount, the Innovation Subaccount. And it can be used, basically, to support some project that's allowable with the underlying accounts. So the district attorney is one, juvenile justice is another, Community Corrections Partnership. Any of those identified groups, the funding can be used, and it's completely up to the board. There's no approval by the Community Corrections Partnership. There could be a recommendation, but the board decides how the funding is spent. So what I'd just like to leave you with today, I think you all understand the need for this. If you saw the op-ed in The Californian on Sunday, I wish I could report to you that the problem was improving, but it's not. The number of felony cases of domestic violence have doubled in Kern County since 2010. There are nine pending domestic violence-related homicides being handled in our caseload. So I would just ask you to consider, obviously, I'll talk to Mr. Alsup about this, and looking forward to that meeting on Friday, but just consider either taking a portion of that money, or all of it, whatever you think would be appropriate, and devoting that, or assigning that, whatever the proper word would be, to the Family Justice Center for the tenant improvements. Because once the building is ready to be inhabited, the costs are minimal, and probably actually non-existent to the county, with the exception of ongoing costages, electricity and that type of thing. So I want to thank you for your time. I know this is a bit of a lengthier presentation, but I really appreciate your time. I appreciate all of our community partners that are here today, I really do. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or Ms. Bernard would be happy to answer any questions. If you get her going, she's very passionate about this subject, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. Ms. Green, that was an incredible presentation. And I really appreciate what you're doing, what you've done, who you have always been as a passionate advocate and defender of victims. That is who you are fundamentally. And so I really admire that about you, and I really appreciate what you're doing. I think it's particularly noteworthy that this type of wraparound holistic service provision, if you will, is considered best practices in the world of criminal justice reform, dual diagnosis treatment, which we know is emerging as the enhanced methodology by which to treat a whole host of ailments in society. So I am very excited about the center, in particular, the ability that we will have to address mental health concerns as they relate to trauma, childhood trauma. We know that this is absolutely prevalent, and the cycle of abuse, substance abuse, instability, the whole nine. All of these indexes can be tied to the inability to address these emotional, mental issues that we know are underlying a lot of this behavior. So I'm a big fan, a big supporter of yours, and I believe that our innovation fund at the CCP really is perfect for this kind of operation, this kind of pilot project, if you will. I know it'll go beyond a pilot project, but it is something innovative. It's new. It's not something we're doing. We know other counties across the state are doing it, and that it's identified as best practices. So to me, this seems like a very reasonable, very sincere and appropriate request. I will be supporting your efforts to use that fund to expand these services and to identify opportunities to be holistic in the way in which we deal with all the people that have been entrusted to us, victims, offenders, children, on the whole. So I appreciate what you're doing, and I look forward to continuing to support your efforts. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. I don't see any other requests from the board. At this time, I'll ask if there are any members of the audience who'd like to make comment on this item?
Yes, I'm actually, was a victim of domestic violence. I witnessed my five-year-old sister being raped when I was three and a half. I was thrown against the wall, headfirst. I witnessed my birth mom being beaten. I just found out recently from a very good friend who knew my adopted mother, my adopted father tried to hit her when she was legally blind. I was actually molested in one of my group homes by a guy. So I was one of those victims, but I didn't let that abuse stop me. I became a teacher to put into it. And here's my teaching condition through American River College. I also became a student government officer over at Sac City, Homecoming King at Sac City, Special Olympics. So I didn't let the abuse stop me. I achieved great things despite that abuse. And now I want to put a stop to it and get back to the community and get back to the people like what my mom did, who was a foster parent, because the foster kids need that new hope. Let them know that they can overcome that abuse, let them overcome that discrimination, like I did, like my mom did, like my adopted grandma did. Now I want to be, as an educator, be part and join your force to put into domestic violence. Just please, contact me, because I want to do anything possible to help you put into it.
Thank you.
Mr. Horn, I know you spoke under public presentations, but would you state your name for the record, please?
Michael, M.I.C.H.A.E.L., Last Things Horn, H-O-R-N-E, like Lena Horne.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, the requested action is to hear a presentation, receive and file.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a motion, a second? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green, and thank you for everyone who is here for that item. Next item on our agenda is item 31, a fire department. There's actually three items, 31, 32, and 33, that we're going to hear concurrently but vote on separately. These items pertain to agreements with three cities in Kern County. Item 31 is in regards to the city of Maricopa. Item 32 is in regards to the city of Taft. And finally, item 33, the city of Wasco. So we have our fire chief with us, Brian Marshall. Chief, when you're ready, please proceed.
Chairman Scrivner, members of the board, today we bring three contracts for service to provide fire protection services, emergency response for three of the cities that the Kern County Fire Department protects. This is the result of six months of negotiation with the cities to create a contract that'll be a five-year agreement. We've worked with county council on the agreements and the CAO's office to come up with these agreements. And there's three contracts before you. I'm just gonna go through one of them to explain the methodology and how we develop our city contracts. So I'm gonna go through item number 33, which is the city of Wasco. It pretty much is a standard agreement, and it includes, over the five years, nearly $2.6 million of revenue to the Kern County Fire Department. We begin developing our contract methodology using our cost for fiscal year 2015-16. That provides the baseline dollars as we build the agreement. We look at all the city agreements, fire fund, and put it all together. We have an indirect and a direct cost allocation to the cities, and we use per capita to also come up with an amount. The per capita cost for the city of Wasco is $43.10. The city's allocated direct cost is $912,759. The indirect cost is $116,012. That leads up for an allocated cost to the city of Wasco of $1,028,771. It should be noted that the cost to run a fire station is approximately $1.8 million a year. When we come up with this cost, we then minus out our fire fund property tax that's collected within the city, and that amount for the city of Wasco is $531,620. That leaves a first-year cost of $497,151 for the city of Wasco. We have a 2.1% escalator, which is a CPI escalator, over the five-year contract. So the city of Wasco will pay $2,592,371 over the term of the five-year contract. The prior five-year contract, the city paid $2,238,799. These contracts are truly a win-win for the city and the county. We provide a geographic response to the entire county. That means a fire station in the city of Taft could be on a strike team to the Erskine Fire, protecting structures in the Kern River Valley. We move our resources all around. Plus, the Kern County Fire Department provides specialty resources, hazmat, urban search-and-rescue, fire investigation. All of those services are provided to the city. It also eases the burden to the city with what we provide. We hire the firefighters, we train the firefighters, we provide everything that a firefighter needs to do the job, fire trucks, personal protective clothing, and the city is able to enjoy the benefit of the entire countywide fire protection system. Again, a big fire in Wasco will get fire units out of Metropolitan Bakersfield, Shafter, Delano. Whatever the need is for the city, we respond. So it is truly a win-win for all of the cities that participate in this. Where we're at right now of our contracts, our nine contract cities, two weeks ago, we brought forward the Ridgecrest City Contract that was approved by your board. Currently, you have the three contracts today, Wasco, Maricopa, and Taft. We're finalizing contracts with Arvin, McFarland, Shafter, and Tahachpe, and those will be coming to your board in the coming months. And our last contract is with the city of Delano. It's on a different schedule. It'll be in 2020. So these contracts, as I said, is a win-win for the city and the county, and the county Fire Department, as we provide the service across the county. And that concludes my presentation as a brief overview on these contracts. And I'm available for any questions your board may have.
Thank you, Chief Marshall. I'll ask if there are any members of the audience who'd like to make comment on items 31, 32, or 33. Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board, and once again, we heard these items concurrently, but we will vote on them separately. Any... Supervisor Couch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These items concern me, and I'm just gonna be blunt about it, and I'm not gonna beat around the bush. We're going to, Chief, you just said that you're gonna be bringing several other cities forward, including McFarland? And these are retroactive contracts, so let me first ask a question. Do the cities, these particular cities, how often do they, what's the frequency of their payment? Is it an annual?
Quarterly.
Quarterly? Is that right?
Supervisor Couch, through the chair. The cities pay quarterly, and we've been working on these contracts for the last six months and just trying to get them finished up. They actually take effect July 1st, and that's why they're retroactive.
Understood. Here's the part that bothers me. I would much rather have, and I don't want to go too far into this unless I have to, because I know this has been a subject of some contention. I would much rather have the city of McFarland here at that podium explaining to us why they get a far, far better deal than all the other cities that you have been working with. And I don't believe that your work is inaccurate, is wrong in any way, and I believe that all the cities concur with these contracts. I just don't think it's, I think the public has owed an explanation while we're doing this as to why one particular contract is going to be handled very, very differently than all the others. So that would be my preference. When do you think you could bring all of them back?
Supervisor Couch...
Other than Delano. The Delano one is a different...
Supervisor Couch, through the chair. They are going through the city council process. I know we received a couple contracts last week, so we'll be finalizing them to place them on the board agenda. One of them is McFarland, so I expect within the next 30 days, you will have McFarland before your board, and we can work with the CAO's office to invite McFarland to that board meeting.
Could you, would it create a problem for you to approve these contracts on that same day? Or to have them back on our agenda on the day that you have McFarland on the agenda?
Supervisor Couch, through the chair. That would be a question. I would defer to county council to ask if there's any issues with bringing these contracts back.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Nations, do you have any comment on that?
The agreements are already retroactive in nature, so I don't think a brief postponement would jeopardize anything.
Well, I'll make, how do I ask you to do that? Do you need a motion to do that, or can I just ask you and acquiesce? How do we proceed? How do you, how do we proceed?
Supervisor Couch, I again would defer to county council on the process used to bring this back.
Mr. Nations?
I would recommend a motion to postpone consideration of the proposed retroactive agreements for these three entities until the date that you're planning on bringing the others back.
Thank you, Mr. Nations, I'll make that motion.
Do we have any other comments from members of the board? Supervisor Gleason?
Thanks, Jim. Ms. Couch, I just don't understand why. What are we hoping to affect by delaying?
Well, let me be, I said I was going to be blunt, so I will be. This is what it feels like. There are three cities in the fourth district, the district that I represent, that are on the agenda today, that are going through, that have gone through the process, the formula has been applied to them, and we're at the stage where we're going, they've already approved them, I believe, their city council staff, and now it's up to us to approve them. And it feels like along comes McFarland much later, after we've gone through this process, and everybody else has approved it, and we've approved it, and then they come at the end and they get a better deal. I don't believe that's your intention, but that's what it feels like. And I know this has been a huge source of contention among the city managers throughout the county. And reasonable people can disagree, and we may have completely differing viewpoints of this particular subject, and I respect that, but if it's such a good idea for McFarland to get the quote-unquote "deal" they're going to get, I think it would be, they should have no problem standing there at the podium and explaining to us why that is.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. I don't think, I disagree with you. I think there is a difference in the contracts and how we got to where we are trying to get to, and I think there's valid reason for those things, and if, I'd be glad to listen to McFarland and help McFarland explain to all of us why it is what it is, and why that's happening, and the history behind how we got to the point where we're at. I just don't want to subject the citizens of the fourth district to any unnecessary delays. I'd be okay with postponing, and I will vote to support, I just don't, and I understand, I think what you're saying is that McFarland can get up here and explain to all the other city managers why they're getting a quote-unquote "better deal" than the other managers, and I'm okay with that, as long as the people and the citizens in the fourth district and any other citizens aren't hurt by waiting.
Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you. With council's statement that there's no consequence to deferring it, I would defer to the supervisor's request to have it heard concurrently, so I would second that motion.
Can I ask a question, Chairman?
Supervisor Perez?
Supervisor Couch, how do you anticipate getting McFarland here?
I would, I don't know that I would be responsible for getting them here, but I would assume if they're asked to be here to make that presentation or explanation, that they would be happy to do it, but-
So it's possible they'll just say no, or opt not to show, right? I mean, we don't have any jurisdiction over requiring them to come in.
I suppose that's possible.
Okay. So you, I mean, do we know if they would be willing to come? Do we have a sense about?
I have no idea. I have not spoken to them.
Okay. Got it. We don't have any way to compel them, though, council, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you Supervisor Perez, and just from my perspective, as long as council has assured us that this won't have any consequence to the agreements with these three cities or any of the others, then I'll support the motion for a delay. So we have a motion to postpone, and we have a second. Mr. Turnipseed, would you like to make comment?
Please.
I thought I already opened it up to the public, but I'll reopen it. Thank you. Good morning.
New question. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Michael Turnipseed, representing the Kern County Taxpayers Association. So you have three contracts, does each city have a different rate? You mentioned $43 for Wasco, there's Shafter, and I mean, Taft, are the two cities paying the same?
The rate for all the cities are the same, the variances are population, fire fund, et cetera, but it is a standard contract across the board.
So McFarland will be paying the same rate per person as everybody else, I gather, it's not because of the question asked? Just wondering, because I think every city should be treated the same, because we're charging for a rate, and it really shouldn't be much difference if you're in Wasco or Taft, how much you're paying per head or per person for the service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Okay, see no other requests or comment? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of our agenda this morning. We do have items to consider in closed session under county administrat-, I'm sorry? Did I miss something?
Mr. Chairman, we just voted on item 31.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, you're right. I moved right, moved right past it, so we have, we had a motion, a second, and we voted on item 31, and so now we have item 32, please. And so I'll return the board and ask for a motion.
I'll make the same motion with regards to item, with regard to item 32.
Same second.
Okay, you have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
And now, item 33.
Excuse me, same motion as 31 and 32?
Same second.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you. The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for correcting me. And now, we have reached the conclusion of our agenda. We do have, we do have one item under county administrative office to consider, item 49, and under county council, we have three items, items 50, 51, and 52, so this time I entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So moved.
We are adjourned.